I'm glad I came tonight.
I'll order the September 12th meeting of the Cary Town Council. And at this time, I'll recognize Councilmember Robinson for our ceremonial opening.
Thank you so much, Mayor. It's so nice to see the council chambers filling up with people who care about our community, so scouts and everybody. Let's go ahead and stand and pledge allegiance to our flag.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First order of business is to adopt an agenda. I would entertain a motion to do so.
So moved.
Second? There's a motion and a second discussion. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously, and we have an agenda. We now move to recognitions, reports, and presentations. We have special guests in our audience this evening. Scout Troop 208 from Christ the King Lutheran Church, I'm a charter member there, by the way, working on their citizenship in community and communications merit badges. Would you stand up and be recognized, please? Thank you so much for being here. We now have our town manager update, and I'll recognize Mr. Stiegel.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Veterans event, I can't think of anything more important than supporting the men and women who are willing to die for the freedoms we all enjoy. And today, we joined the American Legion in kicking off our third annual three-day Veterans Experience Action Center at the Herb Young Community Center. For those who aren't familiar with the event, about 30 VA administrators and 15 veteran service officers come visit onsite to help our veterans with existing or new claims with the Veterans Administration. I believe we're one of a handful of places in the nation where this occurs, and the turnout is always incredible. So we ask our staff not to park in the deck to make access easier for our veterans and their families. Even so, the numbers were so large at times today that people had trouble finding a parking space, myself included. And we've also been told that Governor Cooper is hoping to stop by maybe tomorrow. So for those who have business at Town Hall on Friday, I wanted to let them know so they can give themselves plenty of extra time for parking. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Stiegel. I've been to the one last year, and it was on a Saturday morning, and they were lined up around the building. These are people who come from long distances to get services they've been trying to get for months. So it's a valuable service, and I'm very pleased that we're doing it. Okay, we now move to Public Speaks Out portion of our meeting. And we've included instructions for speaking at Public Speaks Out on the printed agenda. And if you would like to speak, please take a seat in the rows to my right, that are shown as reserved, and follow the instructions on the agenda. There's a three-minute time limit for Public Speaks Out speakers. And once that three minutes is reached, I will interrupt you, not trying to be rude, but trying to be fair to all of our speakers. We have a timer on the podium. It'll start off with a green light, and then it'll turn to a yellow light when you have 30 seconds remaining. And then, when your time has expired, it will turn into a flashing red light, and that's the moment I'll interrupt you again, trying to be fair and not trying to be rude. To have an effective Public Speaks Out portion of our meeting, we ask that if you're here with a group, that you have a spokesperson for the group to reduce repetitive comments and to be more efficient. And if you would like to speak after the person that's currently speaking, I would ask that you stand over there at the top of the stairway so that we know that there's someone else, and you won't distract from anybody else, and we'll, again, have a more efficient meeting. Public Speaks Out speakers may speak on any topic unless it's a public hearing, and that works to your benefit because public hearing speakers have five minutes for their comments instead of three. So those are the rules and guidelines, and we hope you adhere to them. And having said that, we'll start the Public Speaks Out portion of our meeting, and I would invite our first speaker forward. Anyone to speak at Public Speaks Out?
Hello, I'm back. You may remember me. I'm Debbie Gilbert Stitt, one of the original 18 homeowners on Twyla Road. On August 26, GCI's rezoning development plan was presented to the Cary Planning Board, where it received unanimous approval and support for full compliance within the framework of the Cary Community Plan. In two weeks, we will be on your agenda for the Cary City Council and are requesting your unanimous support for our rezoning request. It has been a long, frustrating, and tiring journey, first commencing back in 2011, when we requested and were granted a land use change by this very city council. For the lack of luck, plagued by construction delays, second guessing where the Marsfield Parkway would be, and wondering when and who the next developer might be, change is never easy. And yet, since that time, we have seen change all around us. Briars Gate, Highcroft, Green Hope Crossing, the Marsfield Parkway, which ultimately divided our beloved Twyla Road community into the north and south ends. The south end was condemned, and all of those homes are now gone. And those of us who are left are on the north end. For those of us still remaining, the sun has set on Twyla Road. Time marched on, and we are now in our 50s and 60s, and in what should be our golden years, we find ourselves needing to retreat. We realize there are much better places for our property than the few houses which remain, but you must help us to get there. We are confident that GCI will be an outstanding and willing partner with the town of Cary in helping to define, develop, and implement a beautiful community that will showcase the Cary Community Plan for West Cary. They understand the unique challenges and dynamics that Twyla Road presents. In closing, let me say that the Twyla Road community has done its part over the last 30 years to be supportive and cooperative citizens. And we are now asking that you support us by approving our rezoning request on September 26. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Gilbert. Next speaker, please. Anyone to speak at Public Speaks Out? Seeing no one will close Public Speaks Out, and we'll move to our consent agenda, which is item four, if you're following along. For the benefit of people watching our meeting on TV, we're going to take a moment to review the consent agenda items. And please keep in mind that one vote approves all of these items. On the consent agenda, we have minutes, amendment to Cary Raleigh inter-local agreement for interconnections, fiscal year 2019 utility reimbursement contracts update and annual reimbursements, amend code of ordinance to remove pet license tag requirements, 19 REZ 07 pendergraph track, scheduling public hearing for 19812 Herbert and Anita Bailey annexation and 19805 Hoke and Said annexation, bid award for Two Creeks and Plain Tree Lane Storm Drain Improvement Project ST 6040. Would council members like any of these projects pulled for discussion? If not, I would entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
Second?
There's a motion and a second discussion.
I think it is worthwhile for us to really publicize the pet tags because that's going to affect a lot of families, just so they know they don't have to worry about coming in and picking up a tag.
That's a good point. And the reason we're doing that is because now you can...
Make a chip. Chip.
Chip, that's what the word I'm looking for. You can chip them.
Encourage them to chip if they haven't been chipped.
Yeah, and encourage people to chip their pets if they haven't been chipped.
Yep, very good. All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously, and we now move to public hearings. Same rules that apply for Public Speaks Out with one exception. Speakers now have five minutes each for their comments. Our first public hearing is on the Xerox Economic Development Incentive Grant, and Director of Economic Development Ted Boyd will present this item, and council may take action this evening. Mr. Boyd.
Good evening, Council. After months of negotiations, Governor Cooper announced on August 13 that Xerox will build a new center of excellence in Cary. The North Carolina Economic Investment Committee approved a job development investment grant, known as a J Dig, which allows Xerox to receive economic development incentives, provided they make an $18.4 million capital investment, create 600 jobs with an average salary of $113,000, and have participation from local government. The local participation Cary is considering is $210,717, which will be paid at the end of five years if all $18.4 million capital investment is made and all 600 jobs created. As outlined in the fiscal impact section of your staff report, the addition of a capital investment of $18.4 million to the tax base would result in ad valorem revenue back to the town of Cary, $64,400 annually at our current tax rate, resulting in a 3.3-year payback. In addition to that return, the creation of 600 jobs would bring new Cary residents and provide new employment and business opportunities. The staff recommendation is highlighted on your screen. And before I conclude, I'd like to acknowledge our economic development partners at the Cary Chamber. Mark Lawson is present with us tonight as Vice President of Economic Development. Mark has been a great addition to the Chamber team. He spent many months working on this project with our state and local partners. To see this come to fruition, just want to thank him for his hard work. That concludes my presentation. And following the public hearing, I'm happy to address any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Boyd. Now's the time for the public hearing for the Xerox Economic Development Incentive Grant, and I would invite our first speaker forward. Anyone to speak at this public hearing? Seeing no one will close the public hearing and open it up to council members for questions, comments, or a motion.
I'd just like to say that 3.3 years is generally consistent with what our standard has been, and so I'm very glad to offer this incentive.
Okay.
That's one heck of a return on the investment.
Yeah.
I'll make a motion to approve staff recommendation. I'll make a motion.
He just... Oh, Don was making a motion?
I had, I'm sorry.
I just did.
Okay. And a second, Jack, for further discussion. All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Ted.
Thank you.
Our next public hearing is item 5.2, 19 REZ 15 Sri Venkateswara, I hope I said that right, Temple of North Carolina. Did I get any faces up there? I hope not. Assistant Director of Planning Deborah Granon will introduce the item, and council will not take action this evening. Instead, we're going to refer to our Planning and Zoning Board so that they may review it and provide us a recommendation at a future date. Ms. Granon, how did I do?
Bad.
Very well.
What a political answer.
Good evening, Council. For your consideration is a request made by the Board of Directors of the Sri Venkateswara Temple located at Chapel Hill Road and Balaji Place on approximately 9.26 acres. Subject property is highlighted here in yellow. It's in between Chapel Hill Road and the CSX Railroad. The subject property currently has three different zoning designations on it: residential 20, residential 40, and industrial. As you know, there's a temple located on this property today. Land acquisition for the temple started over 20 years ago. There was a special use permit issued back in 2005. Anytime it's less than 20 acres and it's residentially zoned, you go through the special use process. And so they received that, they built the first temple, and it was completed, the first phase in 2009. And now this is what it looks like today. Now that it's 12 years later, the Board of Directors is looking to continue the vision and the dream for this temple. And that includes something called a Rajagopuram, which is a decorative gateway feature, which is common within Hindu temples. So this is just an example of what such a feature might look like as a gateway to the existing temple. The proposed monument location is shown here with the red star, so it would be in close proximity to the existing temple building. So what's the problem? Why a rezoning? Why do they have to come forward? Well, that's because of the height regulations in Cary's land development ordinance. Right now, with the existing zoning and those adjacent parcels that they owned that are residential, you're limited to a maximum height of 35 feet if you're within 100 feet of residentially zoned property. If they rezone the property to an office and institutional use, then they can go up to 50 feet if they're within 100 feet of residentially zoned property. And then we have the opportunity to increase it by one foot for each additional foot of building setback that's provided. So this is how that might work. If they get the rezoning change to where they have O and I property adjacent to them, they could go up to 50 feet. If they go back an additional 60 feet from the required 30-foot streetscape or 30-foot setback, they could potentially go up to 87 feet. So this shows you the subject property that's being requested for the O and I conditional use rezoning. Conditions proposed by the applicant would limit the use to assembly, religious assembly, and accessory uses. If there's a new structure, it would be in compliance with LDO standards, and they've provided an exhibit to illustrate that in the location where this is provided. In the event they do build this monument, it be uninhabited, that there be no speakers, bells, or noise-making devices, or antenna, or telecommunications equipment on the temple, and no increase in the square footage of structures on the property beside what's existing today. So this means you couldn't take one of those houses and turn it into a daycare center or turn it into a school with this rezoning. Could they come back a year from now and look for something different, expand uses? Yes. Could they come back a year from now and look for a community center building on the property? Yes. But at this time, this is helping them with their vision for the short-term goal with the monument. And they've proposed a condition that no construction or new uses would be allowed that would generate additional peak hour trips. So they've provided an exhibit, which is attached to your staff report, that shows that approximate location of the temple, and the distance from the property line at Chapel Hill Road's right-of-way is approximately 200 feet. And then from the next closest adjacent residentially zoned property, it's approximately 175 feet. This shows you a view from the opposite side of Chapel Hill Road. We don't know exactly what they're proposing yet. They're still working through the details. The temple would be somewhere in this general vicinity. We have advised the applicant that more information has been requested by the council and by adjacent property owners, but this helps you get an understanding of where it's envisioned behind this existing house and behind those trees. Adjacent property owners within 800 feet of the subject property were notified, and the property was posted, and this notification mailing exceeds the state and LDO requirements. Neighborhood meeting here at Town Hall on June 25, there were four adjacent property owners in attendance. They were concerned not only about the design and location of the monument, but site concerns about the condition of the property and questions about the Nancy Jones property. We've had, as of 5 o'clock today, we had three phone calls, and then I had a phone call right before the meeting. Again, site conditions, the design of the monument and height, what were the future development plans? And the caller this afternoon had a question about whether or not there'd be cut-through traffic through the adjacent townhome community. In regard to the Nancy Jones house, we'd like to point out that that is a separate piece of property. It is owned by the temple. The land is owned by the temple. That is not part of this current rezoning that's before you this evening. They do have plans to do expansions at some point in the future that would probably trigger another rezoning. So this concludes staff's presentation. Following the applicant's comments and the public hearing, I'll be available for your questions.
Thank you, Ms. Granon. While the applicant comes down, I do want to apologize to the citizens that may have interpreted my mispronunciation as disrespect. I mean, no disrespect, and totally respect the temple, have been there many, well, not many times, but a few times, saw it built, it's a beautiful structure. So I saw the artists that were here building that in the middle of the winter, which was amazing. Anyway, Ms. Top, could you introduce yourself, please?
I will, and I have decided not to pronounce the temple because I know I would not do a good job. They told me what I could say, though. Mayor and members of council, Glenda Top, I'm here tonight representing the SV Temple of North Carolina located on Chapel Hill Road. The request is to rezone the property to O and I. As staff pointed out, currently, the properties have multiple residential zoning classifications. By rezoning the property all to O and I, the temple will be able to chip away at some of the discrepancies that are on-site because of the multiple zoning districts. And more importantly, the O and I zoning district will allow them to fulfill their long-range vision and plans, which is the building of the decorative monument. The applicant wishes to construct a decorative and culturally significant monument on their property as a complement to the existing religious assembly. The monument feature serves as the pedestrian entrance for the temple. The existing residential zoning districts, as it relates to the height, would not allow the temple to be built, would not allow the monument to be built as it is envisioned to be, thus the reason for asking for O and I. As noted also by staff, it is important to note that the decorative monument will be uninhabitable, will not contain any speakers, bells, or other noise-making devices, and will not contain any antennas or other equipment, telecommunications equipment. We also want to note that the original development plans for the temple included the monument and showed the monument in the same general location that it is planned for today. Members of the temple are now seeking to complete the original construction plans for the temple by adding the decorative monument known as a Rajagopuram on the property. This architectural feature serves as a gateway to the temple. In the Hindu religion, there is a timeline when the monument must be built. This is based on when the temple was originally built. The monument must be constructed by May of 2021, which is 12 years from the initial opening of the temple. When the monument is complete, the Hindu temple will be one of three in the United States to comply with the Southern Indian tradition. The original members of the temple made a commitment over 20 years ago to build their temple in Cary. They have become an integral part of the community. The temple is added to the rich fabric of Cary. They have done this by offering numerous opportunities for Cary citizens to participate in Hindu traditions and activities. The temple is proud to call Cary their home. Want to just touch on before I close the neighborhood meeting. At the neighborhood meeting, there were concerns expressed that did include the height and appearance of the monument and the impact the monument may have on certain sightlines on Chapel Hill Road. And there were also concerns raised about the current use and appearance of the temple-owned properties. I want to point out that members of the temple have reached out to several of the residents who were at the meeting and had issues. And since the meeting, they've actually had groups of members of the temple go out and start cleaning up the existing site. So they cleaned up mailboxes, they mowed the grass, and they dealt with some issues with some light poles. And also want to say that the members of the temple are committed to continuing to work with the residents as we move through the rezoning process. I'm here to answer any questions, as are other members of the temple, and we ask for council support. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Top. Now's the time for the public hearing, 19 REZ 15 SV Temple of North Carolina, and I would invite our first speaker forward.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and members of council. My name is Ravi Kandakuri. I'm one of the founder members of Sri Venkateswara Temple of North Carolina. I'm currently serving as the Board of Trustees and Vice Chairman of the temple. I thank you all for giving me the opportunity to briefly talk about the cultural significance of Rajagopuram and how it adds to the rich fabric of our community, as highlighted by Glenda in her earlier presentation. In Hindu culture, the decorative and culturally significant monument, which is also called the Rajagopuram, signifies the entry point through which all the energy that exists in living beings comes inside. A Hindu temple is considered as home of the god, and the representation of the temple structure typically resembles human form. The symbolism of the temple plan and elevation suggests that the main sanctum represents the head of the god and the Rajagopuram as the feet of the god. When a devotee enters the temple, he is virtually entering into an energy field. Devotee's progress from Rajagopuram to the main sanctum is also very symbolic. It represents the phases of progress in a human being's journey towards divine. The architectural and sculptural details gradually lead him to this divine experience as he enters the Rajagopuram and moves towards the deity in the sanctum. A temple without Rajagopuram is considered like a person without a feet. Even though Rajagopuram was part of the original development plan, in 2009, we could not complete it due to financial and time constraints. The SV Temple of NC today serves not just for Hindu community, but goes beyond enriching the quality of our lives in our community. Since inception, we have been conducting several tours for schools, colleges, senior citizen centers, and church groups to exemplify the architectural and scientific aspects of the temple and how it ties to the culture and human life. To name a few, Elon University and NC State University selected SV Temple as their preferred tour sites for their religious studies class. So as Wake Tech College and several Wake County schools and student groups visit the temple through scheduled tours. A typical temple tour lasts several hours, during which we make every effort to enhance their academic knowledge with demonstration of various aspects of the temple. Also, SV Temple has been added as a list of places to visit in Cary downtown Raleigh. The vibrance of colors, the scientific architecture in various aspects of the temple fascinate students, visitors, and challenge their curiosity and leaves them in emotion wanting to learn more. SV Temple of NC is one of the very few Hindu temples in North America built according to Vedic scriptures. We consistently perform and uphold religious activities as defined in Hindu Vedas and Upanishads. This is a very important aspect for the younger generation, where they experience the daily schedule of events in significant order. A temple without Rajagopuram is considered incomplete from religious, architectural point of view, and only imparts partial knowledge to the secrets of religious knowledge. SV Temple of NC regularly conducts and provides humanitarian and compassionate services to the entire community in the region through cross-cultural activities. Our contributions towards Salvation Army and similar organizations provide support to every person in need beyond religion. In recent years, we've been experiencing influx of families and young girls moving into Wake County to start a new chapter in their life. A number of graduating students are finding jobs in our local firms and seeking the auspices of SV Temple to provide wedding services in the beautiful campus in Cary. Based on above, I firmly believe SV Temple of NC has become the focal point of many as they seek spiritual, cultural, and humanitarian support in their life journey. It's beyond our collective imagination to see such a temple, not in its complete form, without a Rajagopuram. As mentioned earlier, the religious integrity of the temple cannot be achieved without a Rajagopuram. The rezoning of SV Temple properties not only provides a path to complete this important aspect, but provides an opportunity to enhance the learnings of many in the community. I would like to thank SV TNC members, volunteers, our neighbors, committee members for all their support in this effort. And should you have any additional questions, please reach out to us. I would like to now request those in support of the rezoning, please stand up. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next speaker for this rezoning. Anyone else to speak at this rezoning? Seeing no one, we'll close the public hearing portion of this. And before I continue, I appreciate the speaker's comments about the temple and all the good work and all the good people that are there, but I have to, it's my duty to remind you that our decision is not based on religion and is not based on the good deeds of what goes on at that temple and the people that support it. We have to just focus our attention on what is before us, which is the height of the monument being built. But I very much appreciate all the information that you provided. And having said that, I do have a question. When we talk about setback, since the elevation changes, are we talking...
It's beyond our collective imagination to see such a temple, not in its complete form, without a Rajagopuram. As mentioned earlier, the religious integrity of the temple cannot be achieved without a Rajagopuram. The rezoning of SV Temple properties not only provides a path to complete this important aspect, but provides an opportunity to enhance the learnings of many in the community. I would like to thank SV TNC members, volunteers, our neighbors, committee members for all their support in this effort, and should you have any additional questions, please reach out to us. I would like to now request those in support of the rezoning, please stand up. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next speaker for this rezoning. Anyone else to speak at this rezoning? Seeing no one, we'll close the public hearing portion of this. Before I continue, I appreciate the speaker's comments about the temple and all the good work and all the good people that are there, but I have to, it's my duty to remind you that our decision is not based on religion and is not based on the good deeds of what goes on at that temple and the people that support it. We have to just focus our attention on what is before us, which is the height of the monument being built. But I very much appreciate all the information that you provided. And having said that, I do have a question. When we talk about setback, since the elevation changes, are we talking about the height from the initial point of that measurement or the height from the ground with the setback?
It would be at finished grade at the point of the ground.
Okay. So it could be even higher from the original point. Okay. Other questions?
Just to follow up to that, you know, the proposed monument could be up to 87 feet, but it's very close right there with the other structures at the temple that are also very high in height. Do you have any idea comparable heights to what it might be, you know, right next to? Or so we have a sense of scale?
It would be taller than the existing, you know, temple structure is today by, you know, 20 or 30 feet approximately.
Okay.
But we'll get some more specific details for you. I've asked the applicant to help make sure we've got a little bit more reassurance about exactly what's being proposed, and they said that they will do that as they move this through the process.
Okay.
Do we have any insight into what sort of lighting there might be? Will the monument be lit at night, for how long? What's the directional lighting?
Once again, there's not a condition at this time, but the applicants heard those concerns, you know, from staff. And so it's very possible if that's something that you're concerned about, they may want to explore before this goes to the Planning and Zoning Board.
And also, that part of Chapel Hill, that's being potentially widened to six lanes for Chapel Hill Road. The markers that you had from the distance from where the monument might be to the road...
That's based on the existing right-of-way as it is today.
So will the right-of-way increase because, will we...
There's no road improvements required and no right-of-way dedication required with this particular request, so the measurement would be taken from the right-of-way as it is today.
Do we have an idea of, because it's going to, I mean, it's planned to be six lanes there, right? Do we have an idea if that's going to encroach on that right-of-way so that really we're looking at less space from the monument to the road?
Yes, yes, yeah. And we can flesh that out a little bit further as we go forward to look at where it would be measured.
How close would it really be at the end of the day?
Yeah. We'll get some more details for you as this goes through the process.
Great. Thank you.
Other questions or comments?
I'll just make a comment that I don't have any concern about the lights at night. You know, I liken this to a church steeple that, you wouldn't say that a church steeple ruins the view shed of an area. In fact, most communities like the, you know, the variety of architectural elements, so I have no problem with the lights. I would not ask them to cut the lights off at a certain time.
No, I'm just curious, because we've received a lot of emails, so I'm just wondering what the plans are.
Okay.
Anyone else? So a little bit about the process for those that are with us for the first time. What happens now is this proposal will go to an advisory board of citizens, and they will listen to a staff report, and they will listen to the applicant if the applicant has changes. And then they will make a recommendation to the council. And when it returns back to the council, two, three months, I don't know how long it's going to take, the council will have a staff report and they will have a recommendation from the Planning and Zoning Board Advisory Board. So that's the process, and it'll probably be two to three months before decision. Is that correct, Ms. Granon?
If it goes well, we'll try to get this to the Planning and Zoning Board as soon as possible. Depends on whether or not they want to entertain new zoning conditions if any, you know, are needed. So two or three months, yes.
Okay.
Let me add, Mayor, I did, excuse me, I did get to meet with some of the neighbors as well, with some of the members of the temple, and I really appreciate how everyone's trying to work together. I think the neighbors brought a very positive attitude to the neighborhood meeting, and the subsequent discussions have been progressing, so I think there's really good on both sides.
And continue that, please.
Yes.
If you have concerns, questions, make sure you contact us, and we'll make sure we get answers to your questions. So thanks, everyone, and this will go to the Planning and Zoning Board. We now move, thank you, Ms. Granon.
Thank you.
We now move to our third public hearing. And if I can get my mouse to work, there we go, which is 5.3 on your agenda. It's 19REZ03, Sutherland Gooch Property, Assistant Director, once again, Ms. Granon, will introduce the item, and council will not take action on this rezoning, but we're going to once again refer it to our Planning and Zoning Board for their review and recommendation at a later date. Ms. Granon.
Thank you. This is a request to rezone approximately 60.59 acres located at the 9,600 and 9,700 blocks of Morrisville Parkway. Subject: Properties Highlighted in Yellow. It's located south of the enclave at Weldon Ridge Development, to the east of the Montville Ridge Neighborhood, and north of the Copperleaf Reserve Neighborhood. The existing zoning is Residential 40 and Watershed Protection Overlay District and Conservation Residential Overlay District. The applicant is proposing a zoning district of transitional residential conditional use, and the existing overlay districts would remain in place. Conditions proposed by the applicant would limit use to detached dwellings, townhomes, and neighborhood recreation. A maximum density of 2.5 dwelling units per acre is proposed. They are proposing a maximum of 115 detached age-restricted dwellings and a maximum of 35 townhomes. They've proposed a condition that would limit the number of townhome units per building to five and 10,000 square feet of community gathering space, which is twice the requirement that's required by the Land Development Ordinance. They've provided this exhibit, which is part of the application, to illustrate some additional zoning conditions. First, that any lots that are located within 200 feet of the corner of Bridle Bowes Lane and, let's see, this other street is Creighton Oak Drive, that any lots be placed at least 200 feet from that intersection. They propose to site the townhomes in the center of the property, which is an area that's also shielded by some stream buffer area. And they've proposed an 80-foot wide escape along Morrisville Parkway, which is 30 feet wider than what would be required typically by the Land Development Ordinance. The site is impacted by stream buffers, as indicated on Cary's most recent GIS maps, and field determination of such features will be required at the time of development plan review. In our preliminary analysis of the Imagine Cary Community Plan, staff finds that the live shape chapters of the plan are most applicable, as is the green level special planning area policies. With the live and shape chapter, we've noted that the proposal provides a mix of housing types in and of itself by having both townhomes and single-family detached as part of the development, that it also provides buffers and transitions with the way the uses are cited on the subject property. In regard to the growth framework map and the green level special planning area, this property is located in a neighborhood west of Flat Branch, and one of the most significant recommendations of this is that the aggregate density be limited to 2.5 dwelling units per acre, and they have proposed that condition. But you might ask, how does this relate to the overall aggregate density with the existing development? And our staff has analyzed that there's plenty of room for this type of density, because currently what we have in the neighborhoods west of Flat Branch is an average density of about 1.5, and then with the neighborhoods east of Flat Branch, we're looking at density of approximately 1.6. So in terms of the development activity that's been occurring, we've got a mixture of a lot of large lot subdivisions that have been recently developed within the last several years, and then some of these pockets of the 2.5 density are keeping the numbers relatively low. There is a greenway trail that bisects the subject property on the southern western corner of the site and a proposed street-side trail along Morrisville Parkway. Morrisville Parkway is a two-lane undivided, I'm sorry, four-lane landscape median thoroughfare, and this shows you the notification of property owners within 800 feet of the subject property, which exceeds the ordinance standards and the state standards. There was a neighborhood meeting here at Town Hall on April 3rd. Approximately 30 people attended this meeting. There were lots of questions: density, lot size, potential traffic, site access. Some neighbors were concerned about property values and what were the buffers, and then we've had several calls from adjacent property owners with those similar questions and concerns. This concludes staff's presentation and following the public hearing will be available for your comments and questions. And the applicant is present with their remarks as well.
Thank you, Ms. Granon. It is time I would invite the applicant forward for their remarks.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Jason Baron with Morningstar Log Group here on behalf of the applicant. Here with me tonight is my client, Epcun Communities. They're the proposed developer of this site and have a lot of experience developing age-targeted as well as age-restricted communities. And we have a little bit of both in this particular application, as Deborah has done a thorough job of explaining the nature of the case. It's a combination single-family detached and townhome community, but a little bit different than what we would typically see. It's not 100% age-restricted or not. It's got a combination of age-restricted, single-family detached around what I would consider the periphery of the case, areas that currently abut single-family detached uses, and then internal to the site, as is depicted on the concept plan that's been produced, a pocket of townhomes not to exceed 35 total. So it's 115 single-family detached units and 35 townhomes. My client views this as an excellent opportunity to provide move-down opportunities that don't currently exist in this portion of Cary. As you all are aware, there's a lot of residential development in this special planning area. There's not a whole lot of age-restricted or age-targeted housing in that area. And so we, my client believes by providing kind of smaller lots, single-family detached that is age-restricted, it allows folks the opportunity to age in place. And, you know, these are active adult communities. It's 55 and up. It's not 62 and up. You're not talking about congregate care. So they anticipate that these will be active adult, but believe there is a tremendous opportunity in this particular location to give folks who currently live in that area the opportunity to stay in that area when they decide that they don't want to be in the much larger houses that are located in this area. I want to highlight a couple of things that Deborah's already covered. She's done a thorough job of examining the policies that are applicable to this application related to the Cary Community Plan, as well as the Green Level West Special Planning Area. The key ones I want to talk about are density, and staff has done an excellent job of analyzing kind of what the overall density is, and that's 2.5 for the overall area, and how, once you plug us in to the current development build-out, how we fit. And as Deborah noted, there's plenty of room for opportunity for a site like this at densities like this. Transitions, we've got, we believe appropriate transitions around the perimeter of the site. We believe the 80-foot streetscape along Morrisville Parkway will be a real asset to it. I know in a lot of cases that we talk about in the green level area, we struggle with, there is this rural character discussion, but we recognize it's kind of tough to fit rural character with curb and gutter and all of the things that go with a town of Cary development. I think one of the things that we've settled on, or at least the cases that I've worked on, we've settled on is the idea that probably the best thing we can do is make sure that we've adequately buffered uses of this type from the public realm. And so we believe an 80-foot streetscape will greatly enhance that view shed and will provide, maybe not rural, but will provide a better benefit to the community from a visibility standpoint. We've got transitions internal to the site. Mother Nature has created some transitions for us. It actually made for a great opportunity from an internal planning standpoint to get the market rate townhomes kind of pocketed in the middle of the site. This isn't a part of the zoning case, but what Epcun does is, even with their market rate stuff, they are master downs. They're still marketing this overall community to seniors, whether it's the age-restricted portion or not. So their anticipation would be the vast majority of folks who would move into those towns would be folks who were 55 and up, but that's, it's still a market rate opportunity. So if their children want to move over there, it's got some flexibility, and they like that aspect to it. And the last point I want to make, we've had two community-wide neighborhood meetings. We had the initial neighborhood meeting that the town provides. We had one, we had another kind of get-together meeting about four weeks ago, maybe five weeks ago, with everybody within 800 feet. Between those two bookends, we've had several meetings. My client has been meeting with folks who live along the perimeter of the site to help everybody understand a lot of the questions that were raised at the first meeting. What are the code-required transitions? What type of buffers? They staked the property. They flagged the property so folks would understand, here's where the lots would be, here's where the back of the houses would be. As I just mentioned, I want to applaud my client for demonstrating a willingness to sit down and talk and work on it, and we continue to be interested in working with the neighbors who are interested in this process. And so with that, I will conclude my remarks. We appreciate the opportunity to speak to you all and look forward to seeing you in a couple of months. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Baron. Now's the time for the public hearing, 19REZ03, Sutherland Gooch Property, and I would invite our first speaker forward.
Just putting it on the appropriate slide.
Thank you very much for this time. My name is Edwin Beal. I actually live alongside that property. I live on Stratford Ridge Lane there, I live 1,500 Stratford Ridge Lane. I've lived there about two years. I actually moved to Cary in 2005, and I lived only a mile and a half away in Cary Park. So I've been in this area in West Cary for a significant, well, what I term is significant amount of time now. I want to point out that we actually don't have a good representation of the people from our community here tonight. White Oak Elementary has a parents' night going on tonight, open house, and we could not get that changed, and we couldn't get this meeting changed. So just wanted to let you know that there would have been slightly better representation. Want to be fair and say none of us is under the misconception that land is not going to be developed in West Cary. So this, that's not what we wanted to come and talk to you about. We actually welcome the 55 and up community or whichever age they're using. We welcome the diversity. That's not an issue. We actually like the fact that typically the homes are better maintained. You get tax dollars into the community without taxing the schools, excuse the dad joke. And we know, you know, in general, it's just better to have a diverse community. So we are fine with the 55 and up community. We wanted to talk a little bit about that Cary plan, because we know as 540 was being developed, people looked in that area of Cary, and they realized that there were a lot of farms that hadn't sold and large plots of land. And you guys spent a significant amount of time, and I'm sure some members here have spent a significant amount of time going through that and building a strategic plan of how you wanted that portion of Cary to go. And from reading the plan, the understanding was that as you got closer and closer to Chatham, it was going to get more and more rural. That was the plan. We're less than a mile from the Chatham line, so if that's the plan, you can't rural than that spot right there. So we know that that was, that plan was developed in 2017, I think, was when it was officially released, so we're only two years out. So that means that that plan still should be in effect, that strategic plan. It hasn't sort of gone sour, so to speak. In that plan, there were two main policies. You wanted to maintain land use transition, and you wanted to respect the heritage and the open space. Those are two of the four things that you guys had listed in there. So ironically, this development actually sort of is the opposite of that. So I know they keep bringing up the 2.6 number, and they're trying to tell you that they're below this number. Well, also on page 205, there's another number, there's actually three other numbers that are listed on there, which they don't talk about, which it talks about that communities such as this in that area are only supposed to be 10 acres. This is 65 acres. Now, if you owed me $65 and gave me 10, I'd be pretty upset. That's a significant difference in the number. And it said typical communities like this, and still in this document says that those communities are 20 to 30. So you still double the number that it says for a typical community such as this. So when we think about even, I know that in their application, they said that they were a cluster subdivision. If you look at the picture of the cluster subdivision, the houses are located in the middle, and around the outside, there are beautiful trees. The way they've set it up, they've clustered it in three separate communities, all towards the outskirts of the properties, which then puts the houses alongside ours. Doesn't quite feel like you're maintaining that tree usage, doesn't feel like you're giving that effect of being rural, and it's not in the spirit of what I think this document actually was intended to do in that area. So this isn't intended to be an attack on Epcun, because they have been helpful, they have come out, we've had conversations with them, we've walked around in the backyard. So it's not an attack. They have been cooperative and communicated. Where we're concerned is that we have put together a list of some of the things we'd like to see, a better buffer to make it feel more like it's rural. That's what we all bought into, we moved into West Cary. We have not gotten a response, but we know that once the gavel is banged and the decision is made to rezone, we're not going to have recourse to negotiate any longer. So that's what we're coming to you for, is to ask for a little bit of help so that we can have time to negotiate, to make sure that we can maintain this rural feel that everybody agreed they wanted in that portion of Cary. The only other thing, in my quick 30 seconds, I'd like to say is that with unprecedented growth, one of the challenges that puts pressure on infrastructure. This isn't... This isn't, you know, something that's unique to Cary. We saw terrible growth in Atlanta, in Charlotte, in cities like that, and we're starting to see a little bit of that out there. So I think someone else is going to come talk a little bit about the environment and like, things like reclaimed water haven't got, quite gotten out there, even though it's on the other side of Cary. There are other things, infrastructure-wise, that unfortunately haven't gotten out there. And a community this large is only going to put more pressure on that. So we, we welcome the community, just not at that size, I don't think.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Next speaker, please.
Good evening, Glenda Top. I'm here on behalf of Epcon Communities. What I'd like to do is to respond to the comment that our development far exceeds by nearly 600% the Cary Community Plan's size limit for this type of development. We have reviewed thoroughly the plan and cannot find any support of this statement. As has been stated, the subject property is located in the Green Level Special Planning Area west of Flat Branch. As best as we can tell, the speaker is relying on language located on page 205 of the Cary Community Plan, which discusses neighborhoods west of Flat Branch. This section of the plan states that small or specialty multifamily, such as senior housing, care facilities, affordable housing are also acceptable provided they are on sites of limited size, ideally 10 acres or less. However, this section of the plan does not apply to our rezoning. The uses proposed are not specifically multi, are not specialty multifamily. Instead, the uses proposed are detached residential and townhomes. The plan, in fact, encourages other types of housing such as small lots, single family, and townhomes. The lib chapter in the Cary Community Plan addresses Cary's aging population, the changing household type and sizes, providing more housing choices for all residents and providing more housing options in new neighborhoods. The proposed rezoning clearly meets these goals and policies found in the lib chapter of the Cary Community Plan. With that said, want to reiterate what Mr. Barron said, that we have been meeting with the neighbors and we will continue to do that through the zoning process. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Top. Next speaker, please.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. My name is Teresa Shump, and I've been a Cary citizen since 2001. I've lived in two amazing neighborhoods in Cary, Weston Point and Copperleaf Glen. My son Zach was born in Wake County 14 years ago. He has benefited from the growth and diversity that a thriving city like Cary provides him. He was diagnosed with a very rare autoimmune disease at the age of 10 called CRMO. His chronic episodes are triggered by excessive heat, pollution, and other factors. Because of his autoimmune disease treatments, he is very conscious about our planet and would like us to consider how we, Cary, can start to make a difference in our community. Cary, North Carolina has been rich in natural beauty, but we have seen over the last 18 years, natural landscape being changed. Change and growth are good. We, we welcome it. But many developers in Western Cary have taken down the trees and neighborhoods, and many are almost like completely covered in concrete or asphalt. On hot days, scorching surfaces bake in the heat, endangering all of our health. Our natural streams and rivers have been paved over so that when it rains, water can't soak in to the ground where it could enrich the soil. Instead, it runs off into our man-made ponds and sweeping trash and pollution into our ecosystem. A simple request from my 14-year-old is please give back, keep the tree canopy, and help our streets and neighborhoods continue to stay beautiful. And a couple of points he wanted me to make about trees to all of you. Trees come back, climate change. Trees are natural air conditioners. They evaporate from a single tree. The evaporation from a single tree can affect 10 room-sized residential air conditioners opening 20 hours a day. Trees can wind, trees can cause windbreaks, can reduce residential heating costs 10 to 15%, while shading and evaporating cooling from trees can cut residential air conditioning costs from 20 to 50%. Trees can also give clean air. Trees absorb odors, pollutants, gases, and they can filter particles out of the air by trapping them on their leaves and barks. Trees provide oxygen. So in one year, an acre of mature trees can provide enough oxygen for 18 people with the sip, with the 60 acres that is next to Copperleaf Glen. That gives us oxygens for 480 new Cary residents. More fun facts, urban landscaping, including trees, help lower crime rates. Studies show that urban vegetation and trees slow heartbeats, lower blood pressure, and also relaxes the brainwaves. Girls with a view of nature and trees at home score higher on tests of self-discipline. My son asks that we continue to, if we're going to take trees away, we add new trees. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please. Anyone else for this public hearing? Going to close the public hearing and open it up to council members for questions and comments. I have a question for staff. I know that we don't plan to do reclaimed water all over Cary.
Correct.
Where do we plan to do reclaimed water? Is it in that area that we're talking on?
I don't have that answer, but I'll get that for you.
Okay. And then the, from what I hear, there's a misinterpretation of somebody on the Cary Community Plan. So I'm hoping that every, all parties can meet, and we can talk about the Cary Community Plan and talk about the interpretation of it because I heard two opposites things, reading the same Cary Community Plan. So I think that would be beneficial as well, and maybe staff could weigh in. I don't know.
Sure.
If staff's available for that.
Absolutely.
And other questions are coming?
I just have a question. You, you showed the PRCR facilities master plan, page 47, and it had the greenway that went around the side, the southern part of the property. And then the other picture showed a greenway buffer at the, I guess, north side of the property. Where is the greenway going and is the developer planning on?
The greens on that map are really confusing.
Yeah, I'm trying to figure out.
The dark mossy color was supposed to be something, like...
So you've got the greenway through the subject property, through this area, and then the greenway here, and then you've got a streetside trail.
Right, but if you go back to the picture of the property, there's a dark green at the top, and it's called Buffer Greenway? Is that, it's a buffer or a greenway? Or it's a Buffer Greenway?
Yeah, the greens on that are, are really strange because...
On the, on the applicant's, on the applicant's slide?
At the, at the north side, it looks like that dark green matches Buffer Greenway.
I see what you're saying.
Meanwhile, bonus open space is a mossy green, and there's no mossy green on the map.
And there's no greenway is identified, there's that dark...
What does it look like to you? That's what I want to know.
Poor Ed's colorblind.
Yeah, Ed thinks they're all brown.
They're all brown.
I didn't even notice that.
He thought they were brown.
He'd have had a question otherwise.
I think it looks great.
So the applicant is listening and furiously taking notes, and I have a feeling you'll get a much more color-corrected map going forward to clarify all of these.
Great, thank you.
Other? Yeah, I'd like to just make a comment about the spirit of the Cary Community Plan and the plans that preceded the Cary Community Plan for this area. The idea of clustering was to take land that could be developed and set it aside, and in exchange, get more units on the property than you would otherwise have. That was the idea of it. If, if the developer is preserving predominantly the land that he already has to preserve in accordance with our laws, he's not exactly achieving the spirit of the law or spirit of the plan. Does that make sense? He's just, he's, that feedback on that is really annoying, isn't it? He's, if he's, if he's saving the land that he has to save anyway, he's not actually achieving the purpose or the spirit of clustering because he's just doing what he has to do.
Because of stream buffers is what you're saying?
Correct. Yeah. Could you, can you go back to that one with the fingers, the, the green space fingers? It would be helpful to us also if this illustration showed us how that bonus open space is going to be done, because from this, it's very unclear whether the 80-foot streetscape buffer is considered part of bonus open space, if it's part of the 10,000 square feet of community gathering space. So I'd like to understand where the clustering, where the donation of land comes in that really justifies the density.
Right. Is it just along the streetscape or is it somewhere else?
Yeah, that's what I want to know, because I do agree with the first neighborhood speaker who said the idea that a lot of people would think of is that clustering would pull in towards the middle with more buffer, copious buffer around the, the outside. So I just think this needs to be tended to more than what has been done so far.
This goes back a little bit when I asked the question multiple times about what makes something look rural. And I've always felt like driving down the road, you feel like it looks rural if you look on left and right and you just see trees. I don't, the curb and gutter, I'm not going to get into that, but the tree, the tree...
We've resolved curb and gutter.
Yeah, yeah, that's done. But when you look right or left, or look right, and if you're, if you've got an 80-foot buffer or there's plantings, I guess I would be more interested to know if the buffer, if it looks fully vegetated or if you'll see, see houses through it. Because to me, if, if you're taking a buffer, then, and, and you don't see the houses inside, I, I did, let me back up. I did a little math on this. I hope my math is right. I took the six and a half acres of townhouses out of the 65 and a half acres. So that left 59 acres non-townhouse. And if you do that and you take the 115 homes that are in the outside, then you're roughly just over two per acre on average density. And that's what's closest to these less dense areas. So to me, it makes, as opposed to what you're saying, that you're, you put the houses in the middle and you're, to me, this is actually using transition from a one and a half per acre to a two per acre to basically a five per acre in the middle. And I think it does make sense that you're, you're getting more dense to the middle when you can't see it from the outside. So you do maintain from the road, you maintain a rural Cary.
That the density in the middle is better than having the density on the periphery. I get, I agree with that if that parcel is supposed to support that density with the amount of open space that is included. And that's the big if right, right now.
So it's two and a half, which hits, which is, hits the target for the entire area, which means if it's going to hit for the entire area, you could have some three or three and a half mixed with the one and a half to achieve two and a half, right?
If done well.
If done well. So, so this one's not driving up the density of an average. When, when you're coming in at the average, right, math-wise, Harold, you're not, you're not increasing the density of the area.
I think the point that Jennifer's getting to, if you took away all the buffering, which you're not allowed to build on, now your density is going to be probably three, three and a half or something like that. It's going to make a big difference. I think that's where you're going.
Yeah, generally, I'm just saying that the spirit of the plan, when we talk about the value of clustering, is to preserve more land. If you're preserving only what you're required to preserve anywhere, basically that, then you haven't really met the spirit of it. You use the word clustering because you have greater density, but you're not achieving it.
Correct me if I'm wrong. What I'm hearing from you is density is not so much the concern as much as they're not preserving enough open space and trees on the periphery that does go to the cluster, what we used to try to do in the southwest area, so that you can't see it driving by or people from other houses can't, you know, really see it to the backyards and steal. So unless you knew it was there, you wouldn't know it was there. So you, you made good points.
Yeah, that's the point. Can I say one last thing to address this thing?
Yeah, go, go.
I'm sorry to interrupt you, but you said it's not driving up the average. It is driving up the average because the average in that area was below the acceptable 2.5. It's not going beyond the 2.5, but it's...
Right, it won't, that's right. It won't, I misspoke. It won't take it above, it's not taking it above the average, but it is increasing the average, yes.
It's not taking it above the allowable average or the target average.
That's right. It is increasing the overall.
Yes, thank you. Okay, sorry, go ahead.
The density, to me, is not a concern. I share some of your thoughts and concerns. Predominantly, the density is not a concern to me because the majority of it's senior or age restricted housing. You know, it's not going to impact the schools, it's not going to impact the roads as much. There's not going to be, you know, lots of people with four or five kids living, you know, it's, it's going to be a much quieter, calmer type of community. The townhomes obviously are going to be market rate, but they're more centralized, surrounded by the age restricted housing. So density and a lot of that is not really concerning me. I do share some of your concerns that the amount of green space on the periphery, especially near the existing neighborhoods, could maybe be a little better. I would agree with Ken's comment regarding the Morrisville Parkway buffer, maybe 80 feet's good. I'd like to know a little bit more about that, what trees are staying, what's being planted, supplemented, that kind of stuff. Is there going to be a berm there or not? Those kinds of things. But I, I think the overall concern that I've heard tonight, or at least that resonates with me, is some of the buffering next to the adjacent neighborhoods.
And you brought up a question that I wasn't thinking of. Are there any champion trees on this?
Well, they have not asked for, they, they don't have to submit a tree survey at this time because this is a conditional use rezoning. It's not MXD or PDP. So if there are, they're going to have to submit a tree survey with the development plan, then they'd have to go through QJ if there are any champion trees.
Without getting into the math or the colors, I think we've all learned that it's quite a challenge to try to comply with the special area plan out in, in West Cary. We run into that time and time again, and I hope the applicant will continue to meet with the, the neighbors on that, especially with the buffering next to their houses, as Don indicated. But I do think the applicant has tried to comply with the spirit of the, of the plan. In lots of cases, we don't even see that happening. I think the 2.5 is, is a good number. Townhomes, although certainly not meeting our definition of clustering, they are kept in a central pod away from everything else. An 80-feet streetscape, I don't know how that's actually going to turn out with berms or whatever, what it's going to look like, but when we require 50, they're doing 80 along Morrisville Parkway, I think that's quite a, quite a stretch also for them. So I, I think they're trying to comply with the spirit of the plan, even though they're not probably quite there to the, to the letter of the plan. And I got to say, those tree facts are wonderful. We, we can't get enough of that. It's, it's a wonderful thing. Thank you for offering those.
There's one last thing I made note of, is I didn't hear in discussion about the lot size in comparison in the community plan, because I think the community plan suggested, suggested quarter-acre lots, is that right?
That's correct.
So it's community plan suggested, but we're talking about eight, one-eighth of an acre lot. I don't, I don't feel like it's, I mean, I know the community plan's out there, but to mandate for a senior to have twice the yard to mow, you know, if they, twice the size lot, to me, is not a big deal. And I think, I like the idea of being able to sell somebody a smaller spot so they have less to keep up. And I think it, for the 55 and up, it just makes sense to me. So even though there's a disparity there, I really, I don't, I don't, I don't have a problem with that, but I think we may need to talk further because I don't know that if we, if we're setting out a quarter acre lot as are suggested in that area, then do we really need to do that? Or is that, have we, have we, have we overreached maybe a, a target that's not fair to seniors to, to say you've got to have twice the grass to mow or twice the yard to keep up, whether it's trees, pine straw, whatever it's going to be? Just a thought.
Any other questions or comments?
I just feel like I have to follow up on his. I'm not saying that the yards have to be bigger.
Oh, you're not. The community plan was.
Yeah, okay. I'm just, I want to make sure I'm clear. So, and the reason why we, for the citizens here, the reason why we are so specific about getting zoning conditions offered is because the, the land goes, the zoning goes with the land, it doesn't go with the applicant. So while we've seen Epcon and we've really liked what they've done in our community, we know that something could happen and Epcon could, you know, sell this to, or not pursue purchasing, I don't know how their arrangement is right now. And it could be some other developer. So we want to tie down these conditions so that it results in a good product for Cary.
Very good. And for those that are not familiar with the process, we're now going to send it to the Planning and Zoning Board, which is an advisory group of citizens. They will review this, they will make a recommendation, which will come back to us at a future date, probably a couple of months.
Month or two.
Two or three months, yes. And we'll make a decision at that point. In the meantime, you can always speak at a council meeting, at Public Speaks Out, you can email us, you can call us, and we'll answer any questions you have. And... And once again, the applicant and residents, please meet, continue to meet, and work on issues, and hopefully when it comes back to us, everything's been resolved and everybody's agreeing on everything, and our jobs will be. Thank you, Ms. Grant.
Thank you.
We now move to our fourth public hearing, 19A08 David S. Johnson, Lee W. Johnson annexation. Planning Director Wayne Nicholas will introduce the hearing and council may take action. Mr. Nicholas.
Thank you, good evening, council. This request is for annexation of about a half-acre property, unaddressed property on Vera Road. It's about 630 feet east of the Trinity Road and Vera Road intersection. It's contiguous to the corporate limits and it's located in the ETJ and currently owned residential 12. The request is not associated with a development plan or rezoning, the property is currently vacant, and the owner is wishing to connect to town utilities in order to construct a detached dwelling on the property. And the property has to be annexed before it can connect. That concludes the presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Nicholas. Now's the time for public hearing, 19A08 Johnson annexation, and I would invite our first speaker forward. Anyone to speak at this annexation public hearing. Seeing no one, we'll close the public hearing, and I'll open it up to council members for questions, comments, or a motion.
Make a motion to approve annexation 19A08.
Second.
There's a motion and a second discussion. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries unanimously. We now move to our fifth public hearing, 19A09 North Carolina Exteriors LLC annexation. Once again, Mr. Nicholas will introduce this hearing and we may take action on this item. Mr. Nicholas.
Thank you. Very similar, about 100 feet away. Came in separately. This request is another half-acre property located at 1209 Old Trinity Circle. This annexation would also include .02 acres of adjacent right-of-way. It's also zoned residential 12. And similarly, this request, the owners are wishing to connect to town utilities to construct a detached dwelling on the property, so.
Thank you, Mr. Nicholas. Now's the time for public hearing for 19A09 North Carolina Exteriors LLC annexation, and I would invite our first speaker forward. Not a speaker, okay. Seeing no one will close the public hearing and open it up to council members for questions, comments, or a motion.
Make a motion to approve annexation 19A09.
Second.
There's a motion and a second and a third discussion. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries unanimously. Let's see if Mr. Nicholas has another one, he does. 19A03 Vincent J. DeFritus annexation, and Mr. Nicholas will introduce this item, but we will not take action on this item tonight, we will take action on this at a future date. Mr. Nicholas.
Thank you. This annexation is for 2.53 acres of property located at 9916 Morrisville Parkway. It's in the southwest corner of the Morrisville Parkway and Fearsen Road intersection. The annexation also includes 1.7 acres of adjacent right-of-way. The property is contiguous to the corporate limits, however, it is outside Cary's ETJ and in Wake County's jurisdiction, and it's currently zoned residential 40 watershed. Since the applicant wished to develop the site under Cary zoning and regulations, it's necessary to bring the property into the town limits first. In doing this, at the same time, a Cary zoning designation must also be established. In conjunction with the annexation, a rezoning has also been submitted. The public hearing for that was conducted last month on August 15th, and the case was forwarded to the Planning and Zoning Board for their review. The zoning would increase the permitted residential density above that allowed under the current zoning to allow for the creation of a maximum of three lots for detached dwellings. And following the hearing, no action will be required. This will come back when the rezoning comes.
Thank you, Mr. Nicholas. Now's the time for the public hearing for 19A03 Vincent J. DeFritus annexation, and I would invite our first speaker forward. Anyone to speak at this annexation, I mean, public hearing. Seeing no one, we'll close the public hearing, open it up to council members for questions or comments. As Mr. Nicholas stated, this is going to be paired with a rezoning, and we're going to see it at a future date. All right, we now move to our last public hearing on the YMCA of the Triangle Tefra hearing. Chief Financial Officer Karen Mills will present this item, and we may take action. Ms. Mills.
Good evening, council. Tonight, we're here to hold a public hearing and consider approval of a financing transaction for the YMCA of the Triangle through the Public Finance Agency, which is a political subdivision of the state of Wisconsin. The Public Finance Agency is proposing to issue up to $20 million in tax-exempt bonded debt to finance the YMCA's purchase of existing property and facilities that the YMCA is now leasing, the property known as the Northwest Cary YMCA. You may recall three similar council actions that you've considered for Seastone, Triangle Math, and Science Academy, and just last November for the Triangle Aquatic Center. The IRS rules require a local government, public hearing, and approval for this tax-exempt financing, and meeting those rules is the sole purpose of tonight's public hearing to benefit the YMCA. By participating in this process, the town indirectly supports the fiscal success of the YMCA, which is beneficial to our community. Staff recommends a proposed resolution to document your approval after the public hearing, and I'd like to highlight a few key issues. The resolution clarifies that this is not Town of Cary debt in any way, shape, or form. Like the three Public Finance Agency projects, the YMCA of the Triangle has agreed to indemnify the town in the case that any action is ever taken against us for our role in this process. Also, approval of the resolution in no way implies that the town will grant any development-related approvals. So now is the time for council to hold a public hearing. Of course, we'll have you to answer any questions you may have after that.
Thank you, Ms. Mills. Now's the time for the public hearing on YMCA of the Triangle Tefra hearing, and I would invite our first speaker forward. Anyone to speak at this public hearing. Seeing no one will close the public hearing and open it up to council members for questions, comments, or a motion.
I can make a motion. I make a motion approving the authorities' issuance of tax-exempt bonds for the acquisition of the existing recreational facility.
There's a motion.
Second.
And a second. Discussion.
I was just joking with Ms. Bush that I remember when the first one of these came through, and it was kind of like controversial, and it was, it was just like a ooh about it, you know, but we're seeing more and more of these lately, and they're becoming more common, and obviously no liability or anything for the town, so happy to help the YMCA.
We have a motion and a second, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Ms. Mills.
Thank you.
We now move to our discussion items. We're going to take both of these together, 18A05 Duke University Health System Incorporated and 18REZ04 Green Level Mixed Use Destination Center. And Planning Manager Rob Wilson will give this report, and we're going to hear from the Planning and Zoning Board's Chair about their recommendation, and we may take action after those.
Good evening, council. We're pleased to share an updated Green Level Mixed Use Destination Center rezoning proposal from Duke Health with you. The council last discussed this proposal at a work session in November of 2018. The applicant spent the winter and spring making changes in response to your input. The site's located west of NC 540 and is bisected by Green Level West Road. The northern portion of the track is in Cary's ETJ and is zoned residential 40. The southern portion is in the county's jurisdiction and is zoned residential 40 watershed. The applicant has submitted an annexation petition running concurrently through the process. Since the southern portion of the property is outside of the town's corporate limits and ETJ, action is necessary first on the annexation, followed by the rezoning. The applicant has asked that if you have concerns or are not inclined to support this rezoning, you give them an indication of that before you take action so as to allow them time to request to continue the case. The site is located in the Green Level Special Planning Area. More specifically, the site which is highlighted here in yellow is located in the Green Level Destination Center, the area where the highest intensity of development and greatest mix of uses is envisioned. The site is a prominent part of the Destination Center, constituting over one-third of the developable acreage that is west of NC 540. There are relevant policies in multiple chapters of the ImaginCary Community Plan. The Green Level Special Planning Area recommendations in the Shape Chapter are most relevant to this proposal. These recommendations call for employment, commercial, and higher-density residential units that are horizontally and vertically mixed with buildings that exhibit high-quality architecture, are four to seven stories in height, and utilize structured parking, all accomplished through a site design that protects and incorporates prominent environmental features and provides a walkable and active public realm. Since the site is in a Destination Center, the applicant is proposing MXD zoning for the site. The proposed preliminary development plan that accompanies the MXD zoning breaks the site into 13 development pods and includes a mix of land uses. Minimum and maximum floor areas are indicated for each use. At build-out, the proposed development could reach a maximum of up to 3/4 of a million square feet of office space, 55,000 square feet of commercial, along with hotel, residential, and hospital uses. Some highlights of Duke Health's proposal are that buildings along Green Level West will be a minimum of three stories and have at least 50% structured parking. There will also be a minimum of six community gathering areas throughout the project and a north-south pedestrian corridor through the site that will ultimately link the development to both the White Oak Greenway to the south and the future Bachelor Branch Greenway to the northwest. A neighborhood meeting was held on this proposal in June of 2018. A council public hearing was held in August of 2018, and a work session was held in November of 2018. The Planning and Zoning Board held a work session in June of 2019 and then made its recommendation in July of 2019. At the public hearing and work session last November, the council discussed several items. Here are the changes that have been made in response to these concerns. In response to council's comments regarding connectivity, the applicant added a condition to provide a 10-foot-wide grade-separated tunnel under Green Level West Road to facilitate pedestrian and bicycle connectivity between the northern and southern portions of the project. In response to concerns about the appearance of retaining walls in stormwater ponds, the applicant has added significant additional detail explaining and documenting what is meant by the term decorative. The applicant was originally asking for an alternative standard to only provide dedicated bike lanes on the north-south primary streets. In response to council feedback, the applicant is now providing dedicated bike lanes on all of the primary streets. Since the work session, the applicant has finalized the road and intersection improvements that are being proposed for the development. The traffic study recommended improvements at 10 intersections. The applicant is now proposing to make these improvements, or at least partial improvements, at eight of these intersections. The applicant has proposed to either construct improvements at the intersection of Green Level Church Road and Beaver Dam Road, or alternatively, make a payment in lieu equal to the cost of this improvement. The condition allows the town's Transportation Facilities Director to decide as part of development plan review whether it's better for the town to get this improvement or collect the money for other traffic improvements in the area. In conjunction with the proposed traffic improvements, the applicant is requesting additional time for plan approvals. While current LDO requirements would only allow for administrative review of larger development plans submitted within two years of zoning approval, the applicant is requesting an alternative standard to have administrative review for all development plans submitted prior to June 1st of 2029, just under 10 years from this evening. After this date, normal LDO requirements would apply, which currently would require quasi-judicial approval. In addition, the applicant is requesting that any plans that include a hospital use would always be reviewed administratively. At this time, I'd like to call the Planning and Zoning Board's Chairman, Mark Evangelista, to the podium to present the board's recommendation to the council. Following his comments, I will conclude my presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Wilson. Welcome, Mr. Evangelista.
Hello. Not really sure what to say here because, like you, we had a work session, there's a lot of questions, a lot of give and take, and those questions get answered, is that necessarily deliberation? Is that someone saying, here's why I'm in favor of something, here's why I'm not? When we actually sat here and had the case before us, there was no deliberation because all our questions were answered in the work session. So I can refer you to the minutes, I can sit here and pick from some of the minutes, but the bottom line was, there were some changes made after you had your work session. There were no changes between our work session and our meeting, that was only a month's time, and we were very satisfied with, as the stuff Mr. Wilson just told you, how they made the changes that you had been at least inquiring about. And satisfied with that was pretty much the order of the day, and we passed this unanimously. I can look into some of the details here, but really they were more questions, and I tend to bring to you the opinions that people have on the board as opposed to just clarifications that they were seeking. So I'll leave it to you from there.
Questions for Mr. Evangelista.
I actually attended the work session, and there was some thoughtful discussion and some good questions asked, and I got the feeling after, at the end of the work session, most of the board members were pretty satisfied.
Thank you.
Since the Planning and Zoning Board meeting, the applicant has submitted additional language to clarify existing conditions. In both cases, the result is more restrictive than what was considered by the Planning and Zoning Board when they recommended approval. First, the applicant had been requesting an alternative standard for drive-throughs, which are only allowed for banks and pharmacies, that would allow them to be administratively approved by staff. The applicant has clarified this request to only apply to a maximum of two drive-throughs. If more than two were required, the others would have to follow regular LDO requirements, which currently require quasi-judicial approval. The applicant has also worked with town staff this week to develop and propose additional language to clarify that if our stormwater requirements change in the future, the changes will be applicable to all development plans submitted after the effective date of the change. Without this condition, based on recent changes to state law, the applicant might be able to follow our current stormwater requirements for the next seven years. Based on our review, staff believes that the proposed rezoning and conditions included in the preliminary development plan achieve objectives of the Green Level Special Planning Area, are consistent with the ImaginCary Community Plan Future Growth Framework map, and meet the intent of the Destination Center designation. Thus, town staff recommends approval of the proposal. This concludes staff's presentation. Both staff and the applicant are available if you have any questions.
I have a couple. The date of change in stormwater requirements before permits are issued, is that what that means? So there's another part of this I'm going to get to next, where they want 10 years of administrative approval. So that's what I'm trying to get at, is the permit, is that what triggers the stormwater? Which stormwater guidelines they fall under?
When they submit a development plan.
When they submit the development plan?
Yes.
Okay.
The rules that are in effect when the development plan is submitted are the rules that they would follow.
Okay. And then you said they wanted administrative approval to 2029, is that correct?
Correct. That's correct. For larger, for larger projects, 100,000 square feet or more, 100 units or more, and that's requested in conjunction with a large number of traffic improvements that they're offering as part of the PDP.
So, and I know you've been talking to our town attorney, but I just want to make sure that we can tie the hands of future councils with this agreement.
To my knowledge, I think that we're fine with that, yes.
Okay. Other questions or comments?
I just want to say that I really appreciate the applicant responding to our concerns that we had, and I appreciate our staff. I think you guys have done a fantastic job. It's a great job working on, kind of tending the whole process and making sure that our concerns were listened to and followed through and thinking about things that we didn't even think of, so thank you very much.
Yeah, I was going to say the exact same thing. The only thing I would add is there's some things that we've asked for before that were, that were laughed at, like a grade separated for pedestrians, and I think this is the perfect place to do it for an applicant who's going to be connected to multiple greenways and do a park, it's the absolute best place. And to put, I'm really thankful that they put bike lanes on both sides. You know, in a perfect world, they'd be separated bike lanes, and as you put them out there, think about it, but, you know, I know you can't get everything, right? There's an old saying, you can't have everything, where would you put it? But I do, I think this is the best we could have hoped for. I think there are some things that could be done, but I'm really, really grateful that they took the extra time to listen to all the concerns and include them.
Help me understand the rationale between the staff approval for that. What's the motivation? Why not business as usual?
Regarding the additional time.
Yeah.
There are significant, I think it's 16 conditions related to traffic improvements that are proposed at various intersections, and as the applicant explained to us, as part of making that investment in Western Cary, they would like to have some certainty as it relates to their project and the larger development plans, and that's why they've asked for the alternative standard of not having to go through quasi-judicial review for what would be roughly almost eight years.
years.
So it isn't so much the lack of council oversight, it's the issue of the oversight to not have to deal with the quasi-judicial.
Correct.
And the uncertainty that goes with quasi-judicial.
Correct.
And time is money. No, and just, just want to understand the rationale.
Did I also understand, because, because it's zero to 100 hospital beds, we've got, they're going to have to get a certificate of need, and so, we don't know the time, so the two years, who knows? So I certainly understand the need. I'd rather, okay.
Mr. Yerhaughn.
Well, some of the things I especially like about the plan is the grade-separated pedestrian crossing to start with. I think that's really essential, and I appreciate the applicant stepping up to do that, that's for sure. And I appreciate the opportunity for a hospital. There's a lot of approvals and permits that need to happen, but if any applicant can make it happen, I think it's this one, that's for sure. And I also appreciate the condition for the Mills House, the historic structure that's located on the property now. The condition as it exists as we speak is much, much better, much stronger than the one we originally saw, and I appreciate the applicant working on that and everybody who worked toward that. So there's some, some good stuff. But having said that, I want to remind everybody that at the work session, which I can't believe was 10 months ago, it seems like yesterday, 10 months ago, I did voice some concerns, and I still have those same concerns today. They didn't resonate very well at the work session. I don't expect them to resonate very well this evening, but I feel compelled to repeat some of them, and I'll be as brief as I, as I can. The center around the Green Level Special Planning Area and the guidelines for it that are set out in the Imagine Cary Plan. Actually, I was always looking forward to a Destination Center here. The Destination Center here has been planned for years and years and years. It's a great location at the intersection of 540. And especially if the design followed the Imagine Cary guidelines, we could have something, I thought, really special here for Cary and that location. The guidelines call for a signature development that hearkens back to the rural and agricultural heritage of the area. And in my opinion, what we have in front of us tonight doesn't really do that. To be clear, I wasn't expecting a new development complete with log cabins and outhouses, just to be sure. We have a hospital here, which I hope to be state-of-the-art, that's for sure. But there are ways of doing things that I don't think are being done. The potential, and I realize it's worst case, but there's a potential of eight-story buildings lining both sides of Green Level Road, Green Level West Road. That, that doesn't make me hearken back to, to anything. And the reduction of the internal streetscape, some of them by as much as 50%, really, that goes for an ultra-urban feel rather than for a rural feel, in my opinion. To be fair to the applicant, it's not entirely their fault, some of these things. The majority of the council asked for this at the work session, and the applicant has reduced the emphasis on the rural aspects of the plan in response to the council's, to the majority of the council's requests, and I understand that. But simply put, I just think that we're getting a development here, once built, that could be picked up and placed down anywhere in Cary. And that may be a good thing for some, but for me, it's, I believe, a missed opportunity to build something special for Cary in a very special planning area, and that just disappoints me.
Other comments?
I would like to thank the applicant for listening and hearing the majority of council concerns and addressing those. I think as this project has gone through the process, it's gone from a really good project to a great project. I'm excited about the economic development opportunities that it provides, the medical facilities, much-needed medical facilities in the area. I've kind of become familiar with Greenville, North Carolina, a lot here lately, and I swear, if it wasn't for the hospital and the university, that place wouldn't exist, you know? So I think you put in a really special development in a hospital and medical facilities and stuff in this area, it's really going to spur some economic activity out here. I think it's wise to create an environment that's urban in nature, pedestrian-friendly, creates a sense of place, a place that people want to go. I see additional office development, office opportunities, employment opportunities in the area. I think that's all the good things. So, we're getting a number of transportation improvements, pre-development, or at least in conjunction with, it's conditioned up one side and down the other to ensure high quality. And I would just echo Ms. Robinson's comments on thanks and kudos to you and the staff and everybody, the applicant, who's been a part of this. Like the Fenton Cary Town Center, this is another special project and required special attention, and I, and I think we've got that, so I'm excited. So, thank you.
Other comments, questions? The applicant has requested that we basically take a straw poll before we do the annexation, which has to come first. By my understanding, I see one objection, and if, if you're an objection, please let me know at this time. Otherwise, I think we're ready for a motion for the annexation, consistency statement, and the rezoning. And we have wordage at our seat for this, and I would entertain a motion.
Do we make these, each one separate?
Yes.
Or can we do?
You can do them all.
We can do them all?
All, okay.
I'm pleased with the way it's laid out.
I move that we approve the annexation 18A05 Duke University Health Systems Incorporated, as well as a statement of consistency as attached to this motion document for 18REZ04 Green Level Mixed Use Destination Center and the rezoning 18REZ04 Green Level Mixed Use Destination Center.
Second. There's a motion and a second. Further discussion. All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
Motion carries six to one. Thank you, Mr. Wilson, for your hard work on this one, and to all the staff that did a lot of work on this one. We appreciate it. We do not, we do not have a closed session this evening, so we have nothing else on the agenda, and I would entertain a motion.
Motion to adjourn.
There's a motion.
Second.
And the second. Discussion, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously, and we are adjourned. Thank you.[1741.21]